Okay, at six o'clock, I'd like to call to order the Graham County Board of Education September meeting, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, and we do have a quorum. At this time, we will have a moment of silence. Our vision: Every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. Our mission: We empower every student, every day. At this time, I'd like to call on Board Member Anderson if she would do our pledge of allegiance.
Let us all please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is to adopt the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairwoman, I would like to propose one simple change to the agenda. I would like to add a short board update and discussion about Constitution and Citizenship Day on September the seventeenth. I was thinking under academic updates or wherever you feel is appropriate.
What was that date again?
September the seventeenth, next Tuesday.
Do we have a motion to add that to the agenda?
What, where you can put it?
Oh, whatever, where, where did you recommend that we put it?
We would put it at three oh nine.
Okay, three point zero nine.
I make a motion that we accept that decision in general.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Next, we go to our superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, team members, and those in attendance and those joining via video. On Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-four, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction released the results of standardized test data for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. And the student test scores from all across the state, all of the state standardized tests, taking the, over the past year, are now collected, verified, and analyzed, and available for the public to provide an understanding of how students did. And I am very pleased to announce that Granville County Public Schools saw overall improvements in the following critical areas. The overall academic proficiency for all Granville County Public School students on all state tests increased. The number of our schools meeting or exceeding growth as measured by the state increased. The number of our schools with a school performance letter grade as determined by the state of a C or higher increased. The graduation rate for Granville County Public School students increased. And the test scores of Granville County Public Schools seniors on the ACT and the ACT work keys, which measure, measure career and college readiness, increased. And finally, the percentage of multilanguage learners, those new to the English language, meeting their expected goals also increased. I'm very proud of our students and our hard-working educators for the progress they made last year. I believe this positive momentum is going to continue to move us forward this year. And I know we still have much work to do, but I'm very happy to share this good news with everyone tonight. I'd also like to take a moment and reflect on a more somber topic, and I'm actually going to be sending this message out to all of our families this week. As we ponder the most recent tragic events of the shooting at Appalachia High School in Georgia, I want us to focus our attention once again on what can be done to avoid any such terror visiting any of our own schools. And here's what we are doing. We're going to continue the practice of keeping all exterior and interior doors locked. We're going to stick to that habit. Regular, random screenings with metal detectors will continue every week as students arrive at our schools. Our school resource officer presence has been increased from nine officers to twelve this school year. We have new safety protocols in place. We have a new district safety officer, Mr. Keith King, now working full-time to support us. We also have a new alert app system, mobile app system, for all staff, which provides immediate communications with nine-one-one and our administrators. We are doing as much as we can to maintain the safety and security of our schools. But I want to be really clear, we need everyone's help. Parents and family members, you can help us. There are things that you can do. First, if you have firearms in your home, make sure they're stored securely and properly. North Carolina has a law that holds adults criminally responsible if they leave a firearm in a location where they know or should reasonably know that a child under eighteen could gain access to it. If a child accesses the firearm and uses it to cause harm to themselves or others, the adult could face criminal charges, and this is known as the Child Access Prevention Law in North Carolina. Next, parents, community members, everyone, if you know of a child who is struggling with mental health issues, or expressing dangerous thoughts, or issuing threats of violence, please report it immediately. You can either call law enforcement or use our See Something, Say Something anonymous reporting system. It's very easy to use. You can make a phone call, download the app and use the app, or visit a website. All that information is on our district homepage, super easy to use and completely anonymous. Once we get those, those reports or those concerns, then we can act on them. We do have access to resources to help our students in need, but we can't help if we don't know there's a problem. So we ask everyone, please do your part and let us know. Speak up and share when there are concerns. Please help us. And please pray for those families who are not so fortunate. Working together, we can hopefully avoid this terror from visiting our schools and our communities. And when I say terror, I mean nightmarish hell. So thank you all. I'm sorry to end on such a somber note, but I think it's extremely important, and I, and I feel like it's my duty to share. At this time, I will defer to my board chair for her remarks.
For those here tonight and those joining us by live stream, we appreciate your interest in Granville County Public Schools and welcome you. Thank you, Dr. Winborn, for your remarks. They're very timely. As board members, we are all concerned about the safety of our children. As Dr. Winborn indicated, we've taken many steps to increase safety at our campuses. The addition of a director of safety has resulted in a core coordinating and well-monitored safety program. The addition of SROs with the coordination among the Granville County Sheriff's Office and local law enforcement agencies has given us much additional coverage in our schools, and we thank them for their support. Our goal is to provide every student with a safe, supportive, and successful school experience. We cannot overlook the additional stress on students, teachers, staff, and administrators when they see and hear news like what happened this past week at the high school in Georgia and what's happened across our country as well. If ever there was a time and a reason to be kind to each other, the time is now. As Dr. Winborn indicated, we made academic progress this year, but we still have work to do. We appreciate your support. We are grateful for our volunteers in our schools and encourage parents and the community to consider being a volunteer. We thank our administrators, teachers, and staff for all the work they do each and every day to, for the students of Granville County Public Schools. And now, we are going to hear from our board members. They have been very involved in many, many committee meetings. So that concludes my remarks. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You are absolutely right about those many, many meetings. The Operations Committee has met, met twice since we met last, and I want to just thank Ms. Richardson for the note-keeping because after each meeting, she send me a copy of them, and I approve them and send them back to her, and I suppose she send them out to all the board members. And that'll be my report on those, because there's been a lot going on in, over the summer in the Operations Committee meeting. The other thing I would like to report on is, on Friday, I attended a virtual meeting of the North Carolina School Boards Association Board of Directors, and there were a couple of interesting topics that was discussed. There was a discussion between the people that serve on the State Board that had to do with trying to get the state or the DPI to fill in some of the board that's going to be left, ESF funds run out at the end of this month. That was just a discussion, and there are being asked, but I wouldn't count on it. But anyway, that's where we are with the association, feeling like, you know, there's a real void between, as a result of losing those funds, and hopefully, we can get a little help from them. Someone asked what they gonna fill it, fill in the hole, and the answer to that was no, we just trying to get some relief from the state as relates to the ESF funds running out. The other topic that I thought was interesting, it was the NIL, which stands for Name, Image, and Likeness of Kids Playing Sports. And there's, there is a bill that's out there that pertains to that. And there, there was a lot of discussion from the representative that serves on the State Board, and we also have a member of the State Board on the Board of Directors. And I guess they spent about thirty minutes talking about this particular subject. And I went, I read the bill and the lead-up to it, and nobody that has any authority seemed to want to do anything with it. But there's a lot of other states that's already done something with it, and based on the, the interest that, that people that I hear talking about it, it's just a sum that down the pike that we gonna have to deal with sooner or later. And to me, that's gonna be real interesting, paying high school athletes to play. That's, that's what it amounts to. And I would ask anybody if they have any questions, but I don't have any answers, so there's no point in going there. And there was one other thing that we had some discussion on was, had to do with football helmets and if they were, had been inspected and approved. And I don't know the answer to that question, but it was interesting to know that they should be, and, and based on what I hear, they should have a sticker on that says they've been inspected before kids are allowed to wear them. That's, if there's no questions, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Ms. Britt, Dr. Lancy?
Yes, I had a chance to, this, I knew principal at early college a few days ago, Dr. Willock Billek, and she's very happy to be in Granville County, as this is probably the best place to be in North Carolina. But since our last meeting, I've had several people come to me through emails and also personal comments to express their disgust or, I guess, uncertainty at the comments that Board Member Hayes made concerning how the parents were dressed as brought their child to school. I said that was her personal opinion, it's not the opinion of the board, but I hope that tonight, that since we are in a public meeting here, she can explain her stance on that and may apologize if she offend anyone of those comments. That's the amount of comments.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, just to provide a little information on meetings that I have attended, actually since the last meeting, Policy Committee meeting, and we will be doing quite a few things here on policies. Also, the next committee was the, or is the Finance, attended that session, great session, and then, of course, the Academic Committee, attended those three sessions, and very good sessions, very, lot of great information or learning with regards to that. Also, attended, I am attending, and I want to make sure I'm saying it right, this is coming from the North Carolina Association of School Administration. We have a session going on, myself and several others attended it today. It's called School Law and Policy Symposium, and we were there today over in Raleigh, and it goes on until half a day tomorrow, and that is very, very enlightening with what they're talking about, Title IX and NIL laws, and also what you just mentioned on NIL, they talked about that today as well. So, a great session, great session.
Ms. Hayes?
Sure. So, it's, it's been an exciting first couple of weeks, eventful, to say the least. So, we, I spent the first week volunteering in the carpool lane at Holly and trying to help with some of the, the parents there that had to bring their kids to school that morning because of our, our bus, our bus driver challenges that we are currently experiencing. I was also at the, the Hornet Hangout when there was some excitement there, and I do want to commend the Creemore Police Department and our, our two security officers that were on the campus and the way that they handled the response to that. They kept everybody super calm and just handled everything appropriately. I think most of the kids didn't even realize there was anything going on. I mean, as far as I could tell, we were, we were all locked in the gym, but, um, everybody was, was really calm, and it, yes, it was an external threat to the school and the city of Creemore, and so they, they were fantastic. Made it to a couple of South Granville athletic events, and looking forward to some of our upcoming Student of Merit ceremonies. The Legislative Committee, so I've been looking for topics to cover. We don't really have enough for a meeting right now, but if any board members would like to contribute any ideas, I'm always open to, you know, anything that they want to send me, and I'll collaborate with Dr. Winborn. You know, we were always going to be like an as-needed committee, so don't want to meet if it's, if it's not necessary. As for social media posts, we actually have a visitor policy. It's policy five zero two zero, and it actually states that all visitors to the school are expected to comply with all school rules, and dress code is a school rule. So, I said what I said. People may have disagreed with the way that I said it, but I wasn't wrong. And I would hope that our parents would like to, to model our dress code when they come to our campuses and, and show our kids what dressing appropriately in a professional manner looks like. I, you know, we, we kind of have a standard here, and, and, you know, all of us sort of participate in that and, and honor that, and I would hope that our parents do the same thing when they come to our schools and come inside our buildings, which is what I meant. I do have another comment that I'm going to read out loud. This was, this was actually sent to me, and this is, I hope they can hear me through this. So this was sent to me by one of our wonderfully committed bus drivers. This person lives in my district and was not comfortable coming to speak today, so I'm just going to read it out loud. "It takes a village to raise a child, especially so when they ride a school bus. Driving a school bus is not as easy as singing 'The Wheels on the Bus.' I have had my bus CDL since March of two thousand twenty-two, and it is something I would never take lightly. Knowing there could be anywhere from one to seventy-two or more children on my route unbuckled, crossing the roads, needing to be safely transported to and from school, has made my stomach and chest hurt. Honestly, it has been known to make me feel sick on more occasions than I care to tell. I feel this way not only because every life is precious and worth protecting, but because of the other dangers on the road that we need to protect the children from. This may be our job, but for most of GCPS bus employees, it's not our only job. What it is, is our responsibility to protect these children with everything we have, including our own lives. I've read the comments on social media of how the community views us as drivers. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It wasn't pleasant to read, and there were not many kind words, except for one mom asking for all of us to say prayers for the students who need to ride the bus. So I'm asking the community for help when it comes to school buses. When you are out on the road during school hours or between the hours of five-thirty a.m. and five-thirty p.m., please think twice before you choose to be in touch of, in too much of a hurry and get in front of the big yellow school bus. Please, please help with the following. Stop driving with high beams on. Stop blocking intersections when buses need to get through or turn. Stop tailgating. If you cannot see our side mirrors, we cannot see you. Stop speeding around us on a solid yellow line. Stop fully without running a stop sign. Stop fully without running that red light. When the flashing bus lights are on, amber lights, we are warning you that we are about to stop to either pick up or drop off a child. Red flashing lights means stop, there are students getting on or off the bus. There's a flashing stop sign arm that extends out the left side of the bus. It's an indicator for other drivers to stop. The buses are now equipped with cameras, recording you breaking the law. In the state of North Carolina, passing a stopped school bus is a crime, a Class One misdemeanor, maximum one hundred and twenty days in jail, and five driver's license points. With these points, the NCDMV will determine whether to allow them to keep their license. As a school bus driver, it is also our responsibility to make sure that all our students are behaving, sitting, not standing, or in the aisle, keeping their volumes down, not yelling, keeping their language clean, not eating or drinking, off their phones, and keeping their hands and feet to themselves. A bus driver's responsibilities don't stop until we get back to school. Every day on my routes, I see so many traffic violations. The amount would probably make you sick, so I'm asking, please, show a little courtesy when sharing the roads with our school buses. The community's help is important in getting all our students to and from school safely, and if you see something, say something. And for those who believe in the power of prayer, please see or say a prayer every time you see a school bus, just as one would do for passing an emergency vehicle. Thank you, and with the grace of God, may we all do our part in keeping our children safe."
Well said. Yeah. I agree, it's a lot of traffic violations out there, and yellow lines, I've seen it myself. It's, it's tough. It's a responsibility that I think our bus drivers take very seriously, and I hope the public will respect them. Thank you, Ms. Hayes, for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. I believe our next item is public comments.
Yes, we do have people who have signed up tonight. You also received two digital public comments tonight, which I have already forwarded to you via email, so you will have those. Each speaker will receive no more than five minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed thirty minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which they signed in. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. If a speaker is unable to present all of his or her information within the specified time limit, the speaker may provide the board with the additional information in written form. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board, except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Concerns related to personnel issues may be addressed through applicable GCPS personnel, the grievance policy, or other applicable policies. Profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any individual will not be permitted. Our first public speaker tonight is Nicholas Henley. His topic is seven point oh one, School Reorganization.
Thank you all for hearing me and bear with me here. All right, good evening, members of the board and central office. For those of you that do not know me, I am Nicholas Henley, the very same that has sent you several communications in the past, emails, and submitted several online forms via the online form of previous meetings. I stand in person before you tonight. I have over twenty years of teaching experience, and I've been at Granville Central teaching science for twelve years, well, completed twelve years. I have reached out to you before in regards to master's pay, attendance policies, and the reason I'm here tonight. Consolidation, merger, amalgamation, fusion, school closure, reorganization, whatever it is you deem to call it tonight. That's what brings me here tonight. That my school, Granville Central High School, should remain a high school building. Before I go any further, let's establish a baseline, because I know some people will be looking at me thinking, what is this man talking about? Let's get on the same page. The rumor mill grinds away, and what I keep hearing is that Butler-Stem Middle School and Holly Middle School will be combined into one and then housed at the building that is currently known as Granville Central High School. The students at my school would then be redistributed to Webb and South Granville, bringing Granville County Public Schools from three public high schools and three public high school, middle schools, down to two of each. Having that number of schools would, as it was stated at the August board meeting, take the district out of the whole. Whenever I mention possible school closure to people, I am told, no one knows, and the school consolidation is to the pleasure of the board, and everything will be discussed out in the open. But when I look over the studies and proposals, I can't help but read between the lines. I believe the conclusion is already foregone. I always back up what I could say, so let me do that. The middle school study for tonight's board meeting under seven point oh one section, School Reorganization, looked at the distance from the southern middle schools to Granville Central. And while the study does indeed list all of the high schools, all the schools to the distances to everybody, it specifically singles out the distance of Holly and Butler-Stem Middle to Granville Central. The study does not point out that both of those middle schools are actually physically closer to South Granville. In fact, Holly to Granville Central would actually increase that distance by more than ten times. Why would the other high schools not even be mentioned unless a conclusion has already been reached? Here's another fact. The timeline proposal in the August fifth meeting under seventh section seven point oh two asks a series of questions with proposed answers. The timeline proposal in August board meeting only mentions closing Central and moving Holly there. No other high school's even suggested as an alternative for closure. So when I'm told nothing has been decided, and I see bias in the studies, I felt the need to come here tonight, paint a target on my chest, and speak. First, please understand this, I am pro school consolidation. In fact, I think we should go from having four high schools to just one. We can name it South Granville Central, Webb, Early High School, so no one loses their legacy. Imagine one mega-campus with advanced Granville satellite classes offered so that every student could take any trade or college class that they wanted. What's the Granville Mission Statement again? We empower students every day? I never knew what that meant, but that would do it, wouldn't it? It would be a model that would attract students back from those very charter schools that are bleeding us, and maybe even attract students from neighboring counties, too. Think of the AP classes. Think of the electives. Think of the athletic teams. But it would require money and resources we just don't have in this economy. I understand that. It's the same reason I don't have master's pay this year. But my concern is simply this, the building that currently exists as Granville Central High School should not be anything but a high school. Look at the facility. It may not have a track or a tennis court, but those can be built. And it doesn't have an auditorium, but neither does Webb. It is arguably one of the nicest buildings in the district. Look at the weight room. Middle schoolers aren't allowed to lift weights, as I understand it, so what would they do in there? The gymnasiums, the band room, the CTE wing alone?
One minute.
But then also the student parking lot. What are middle schoolers going to do with the student parking lot? So much would be wasted if Granville Central's turned into a middle school. Granville Central has room to expand, the other high schools do not. If it's turned into a middle school, that building will be destroyed by TikTok antics. It is a waste and misuse of facilities. So let me state a more realistic suggestion than one high school. Should we consolidate, and admittedly, I do sometimes see where there's a need, then the school board should honor the original wishes of then-chair David Richardson. Move the middle schools to the South Granville Campus, keep South, keep Granville Central, and Webb as the two high schools. and Webb as the two high schools. But you won't dare revisit that, and I understand, because from what I hear in the rumor mill, when the decision was reached years ago, the commissioners told the school board, you did good closing a school, but you closed the wrong one. If the name South Granville means so much to the community, then rename Granville Central to South Granville. The high school students would get an upgrade of facilities, anything they're missing could be expanded. I will cede my time here. Thank you all so much.
The next individual is Brian Lawson. His topics are AIG and Coach's Banquet Dinner.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. First time, but let me just say, my name is Brian Lawson. I've come to you, I'm a former teacher within the county, but I've since retired. But I'm coming to you as a member of the Legislative Committee within the GOP. But I want to talk to you because my wife, she teaches in the AIG program, and we got rumor that they may be cutting, they, you all, maybe you cut, be cutting the AIG. And I want to tell you, as somebody that's outside of the system and, and teaching drafting, of why I would like for you to reconsider that or lobby to keep it. I have been to a couple of additional quarterly meetings with Ms. Becky Bishop and her mentor that came and spoke. And what I've noticed within my drafting program, the students that came in that had AIG prior to coming to the high school, their ability to reason and critically think was far superior than the other students. But I'm telling you, that, far superior. All right? So with that, they, I saw the benefits of those students. I said at those meetings, which was about a year ago, if you could wait five years, I say five years because that way you would give all the students who were in AIG from second grade through eighth grade, they don't really do it at the high school, maybe that's changing, but allow data to be collected and see how these students have done. You know, maybe that's the reason why all the test scores are improving, you know, because the AIG program has been in place now for two, three years, I think. So then that way you could, you could determine that. And then, then look back and say, hey, is the AIG worth keeping, or is it not? Because I'm just telling you from, from me and within drafting, that AIG program is worth keeping. Now, I'm not coming at you to keep my wife's job, she's about ready to retire, so we're about ready to move on. But we're thinking about the kids in the future. I came to my point, I, I signed in twice on the sheet, but I only have five minutes total, so the second part, and that I wanted to talk to you about, was Coach's Banquet. Now, I noticed, I brought it up when I, when I was teaching, or excuse me, coaching girls' varsity soccer at South Granville High School. I brought it up in a meeting, that Ms. Curran was at, I call him Dr. Stan, the Dr. Stan was at, and a gentleman by the name of Mr. Carroll. And I said, hey, we are not doing enough for our coaches. And I used to teach in Roxborough, and every year, they would have a coach's appreciation dinner. And the reason I say that is, is coaches, even though our pay only goes maybe two weeks prior to the season beginning, and then after that, when the season is over, the regular season, it stops, it doesn't matter if you go into playoffs. That time doesn't even count, because I've lobbied before that. I was like, well, hey, we've made it to the playoffs, do we get the extra two weeks of pay? I was informed, no. Which, in South Granville High School, almost all the teams make it into the playoffs because of the coaching and the caliber of students that are, that athletes that we have. Point being is, is there are many, and I don't know the exact number, of coaches that are not even on the school district payroll. They're just volunteers. Some of them are paid, some of them are not. Many of them are not even being paid. They just show up and spend hours. And when I tell you hours, it is hours. According to the soccer, like base pay, I could only go two weeks before the season started. There is no way I could get
One minute.
Those young, thank you, ma'am. Those young ladies in condition two weeks prior to it. So you would start months. I would watch Coach Hobgood with the football players, literally almost year round. The basketball coach yearly, literally year round. And plus, we have like one of the assistant track coaches back here, and stuff that he does off-season with weight training, et cetera. So alls I'm asking you is this. Because, because of, we're teaching these students leadership, teamwork, commitment, they're, they're good role models, they have to pass, you know, the background check, et cetera. It's a way of, of the community saying, hey, thank you. You know, thank you for giving up your time and, and coming out here and supporting our kids. And that's all, you know, that's what I'm asking for. And I'd just like to close, and Sir Isaac Newton once said, he said, no one cares how much you know until they know how much you care. And, and this is a way of showing those, those people
It's your time.
That you care. And once again, thank you very much for, for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
And our last speaker tonight is Russ May with the topic Academic Challenges.
So I, I kind of wrote this in context to the challenges that, and, and hearing the report tonight, that Dr. Winborn presented in regards to your academic, where you're at. And so please take that in the context, because I, I thank you for what you do. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, superintendent staff. I'm here tonight as one of your county commissioners, who serves as a liaison to your board. I believe all of you are working diligently, diligently to see that all our students improve each year academically, and that one day, each of them become a productive and successful citizen. I am confident we want all of their dreams realized. I also know that no school system, government entity, business, or person is without fault. But I do know from conversations in the many school events I attend each day, you are working to better our school system and educational processes. While reviewing a number of issues facing our schools, and there are a number, and not just Granville County schools, but nationally, I felt it was important as a community leader to illuminate the challenges which significantly impact our schools' daily operations. Schools are not just a place a child is educated and is involved in many school activities available. Many years ago, public school systems seemed to be able to focus on more academics. However, in my opinion, our children live in a much more challenging environment. Now more than ever before, our local school systems have become the focal point for all services. To aid the child, to assist in bettering their educational experience, and personal well-being. Today, this encompasses many services that include, but are not limited to aiding a child who lives in poverty, lack of nourishment, mental health cri- concerns and crisis, suicide and addiction, and dealing with crises which occur at home, which in many cases are overwhelming. In part, not all these issues and concerns are new to the school system. But now more than ever, our schools are seeing more children who require these services. This also includes our exceptional children, who have always lacked the appropriate funding from federal and state education funding streams. This ever-changing environment requires more than local school system to achieve academic success. And improving our schools academically is not the sole responsibility of our school system. Studies have concluded, we already know, parental interaction with their child's school, home effort, working with the child, ensuring assignments are complete, tracking progress, holding the child responsible for disruptive behavior, and building a strong partnership with their school will have a direct impact on the child's academic outcome. Our schools cannot be expected to be the end of all means to net the academic success desired. Parents or children, parents or the child's responsible party must work with our school system, and that parent in turn should have the full expectation, and this expectation should be met, that the school, educators, and administrators will be there to further these relationships. These partnerships and relationships will greatly aid our teachers, our educators, so they can more earnestly focus on the ABCs, math and science. Thus, all children can see their academic possibilities achieved. In addition, one must ask, how can I help? Community involvement is essential to building stronger academic outcomes for children. Offering your time to mentor and tutor a child
One minute.
Aiding a parent. Hey, thank, thank you. Aiding a parent who is seeking assistance. And please go online, I asked the parents to go online, and look at all the resources and directions that's provided by the Granville County Public Schools. Often, we're going to look at your achievements academically, and we're going to say, what did you do? And I think we got to start asking is, what are you doing? So with that, I close with this. Parents, community, get involved. Our future is dependent upon their success. And get off the keyboards and become engaged. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
That ends public comment.
Okay, next is item 305. I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Winborn about the special grant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Dr. Mike Steiner. Dr. Steiner, if you'll approach the podium, please. Dr. Steiner is the pediatrician in chief at the UNC Children's Hospital, and he's the vice chair of Clinical Affairs and the Department of Pediatrics, and the Michael F. Dufry Distinguished Professor of Pediatrics. And I had the good fortune of meeting him this summer regarding an opportunity that was just waiting for Granville County Public Schools. And I think it's the perfect match. In just a minute, Mike is going to share some details, but essentially, the Duke Endowment is providing significant amount of funds to help UNC Children's Hospital partner with us, and in conjunction with our Health Department, to provide services for the mental health needs of our children. And as I think you all know too well, this is a huge unmet need. And Commissioner May, you alluded to it as well. Board members, you, you have seen my, my updates to you all since we started school. And this could not be more timely. And I'm really excited about this partnership, and I think it will be a huge windfall for our children and their families. So with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you and let you kind of paint the broad brushstrokes of what this might look like. And, and I will add, we're, we're in the very beginning stages. We don't even actually have an MOU in place. I think the attorneys will be working together on that, but maybe you'll just take a minute and share the vision
Sure.
As we've discussed it.
Thank you for the invitation to come. I really enjoyed getting to listen to the meeting, meeting, Madam Chairperson, the board, school and community members, thanks for having me, and thanks for inviting us to consider a partnership together between the school district, Granville Vance Public Health, and UNC to bring new mental and behavioral health resources to children in the area. As all of you are aware, the children in our country are facing really an unprecedented amount of mental and behavioral health challenges. Seems to have been precipitated by COVID, but there are probably other factors, too. We're thinking we're starting to see some improvement in that, but it's still a long way from where we need to be. And in most communities, resources really aren't in place to help address the needs that children have. The, the mental and behavioral health problems of children, of course, play out throughout their lives and have a big impact on their families, but as we've heard earlier tonight, also have a really big impact on the schools, the people working with students in the schools, and school performance. And we're very hopeful that this partnership can impact those things. What we'd like to see the partnership do, and kind of thinking about the goals, one is to improve the recognition of mental and behavioral health problems. Two is, when it's recognized, improve the outcomes, help the kids. And then three is improve factors related to school performance that are also related to mental and behavioral health things, such as behavioral issues at school and chronic absenteeism. So with those three goals in mind, let me tell you just a little bit about what we, the three organizations are working together to try to shape. And I'm eager to have a period of question or other discussion in deference to what you think is best at the end of the discussion, but I'm eager for feedback and guidance on this. And as Dr. Winborn said, we're really at the beginning of the planning, but very excited about the momentum that's building. So what we'd like to put in place, when I say more resources, is that when a parent has concerns about mental or behavioral health problems for their child, or a school employee, a member working in the school has those concerns, that we have support in the schools to start addressing those. What that might look like is if I'm a parent with concerns about my child, there'll be a point of contact at the school. I would reach out to them and say, hey, I'm concerned that my, my student might be depressed, or might be anxious, or is having some other behavior that I'm not understanding. The parent, the school point of contact would work through consenting with the parent and discuss whether the parent would like to have an evaluation done. If they would, the support from this grant and Duke Endowment would put licensed counselors in schools available to meet with the student and the parent together. And in our experience doing this in other counties, often the parents will join for every meeting that ever happens. Sometimes parents will join for the first couple of meetings and then kind of understand what's happening, and the students sometimes will meet them individually. By providing counselors to be in the schools, the hope is that we can avoid some of the disruptions that's caused when students have to leave schools to get services like this. As was referred to by the last speaker, students are doing, schools are doing more and more provision of wraparound services to improve overall health and well-being and improve school outcomes. The other part of this that would be available would be to use virtual care from either child psychiatrists or other children specialists, again, coordinated by the school counselor or school nurse, and with parent participation and consent, that would be located in the schools. As we've started working through this, we think that the best way to approach this is to try it in potentially one or two schools, make sure it's all a good fit, and that we work on things in a way that meets the needs of the community, with the hope that eventually we can spread it to all of the schools in Granville County. Again, we, as Dr. Winborn said, we kind of came with the support of the Duke Endowment and with the idea, but have shaped this and been guided totally by the Public Health Department and by the school leadership in terms of what this might look like. In summary, we are eager to pilot this together. We are very thankful for the partnership and participation in the program. We're eager to be able to not only bring resources to children in Granville County that aren't currently available, but also really excited to do that in partnership with the schools, which are, of course, one of the most important organizations that students are part of and have a role in their lives. So I'm eager to hear any questions or feedback or further clarifications or more details.
I have a question. Typically, in a county like Granville, if a parent wants to get some services from a counselor, train, or psychologist, or whatever, psychiatrist, what is generally the wait time to find that kind of service? I've heard it's quite long sometimes.
Yeah. Thank you for the question. The, it can vary, and it unfortunately depends on a lot of things that ideally maybe wouldn't affect it, like who your insurer is, or whether the parent can pay for services on their own. But it can range from weeks to months to get in with counselors, or child psychiatrists, or psychologists, like you mentioned.
So this would avoid that
Yes, ma'am. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you talked about piloting. How many schools are we talking about?
Again, we would defer to the leadership of the school district on that, but I think we had considered potentially two schools to start, and then to roll forward from that.
Thank you.
When you said start, how would that look? Will you pull a team, a guy from our county here, mental health professionals, our counselors, and social workers here, how would the team look, that they ground routine?
Yeah, the team on the ground, yeah. We, thank you for the question. We, in, in some other school districts, we've done this where all of the team was employed by UNC. But actually, I think, given the opportunity with Granville Vance Public Health being involved, and the school district, and the relationship those two entities already have, including the Thrive Project, what we would like to do what we would like to do is to support Granville Vance Public Health in employing the counselors. And then they would be mobilized to the schools from the Health Department. So that UNC would be providing just the physician-level virtual services when that was needed.
So referrals will come from our inside people, refer them back outside inside. So how are current counselors, so there'll be a process, they will refer them out to Franklin Vance, well, we call the counselors from?
From the Health Department. Yeah, so there would be a, we, all the consenting to participate in the program would be owned by the school. So whether it was a teacher that had a concern, or a counselor, or a school nurse, or a parent, that would run through a point person within the schools that we're hope, we're also hoping to support a role in the school to do that. And then they wouldn't, you say referred out. It would be a clinician from outside, but the ideal is those clinicians are coming into the school and using some space in the school.
Sir, I got a question. What kind of scope of practice abilities would they have? I mean, is this prescriptive with involvement of parent? Is it talk therapy primarily? What kind of, I guess, boundaries would there be in place without the parent's involvement and then with the parent's involvement?
Thanks, thank you for the question. It like came from the heavens where I'm standing. So I'm not sure who I'm talking to, but I better, I better answer it right.
Mike, this is a board member joining virtually.
Okay, great, great. Thank, thank you for the question. So the, again, in guidance from the schools, this, nothing would happen in the school without the parent's permission, obviously. The, the ideal is that there's an initial, after parents consent and parents being present at the visit, there would be an initial evaluation by, the most common training those people have is a licensed clinical social worker, LCSW. But there are some other master's level trainings that allow people to provide that service. They would do an initial evaluation and identify what the issues are and identify what appropriate ways to address them might be. And then connect, be, again, engaged with the parent on whether the parent would like that to continue happening. If, if the parent would like there to be ongoing counseling from that person, that could happen in the schools, and sometimes that's seven to 10 sessions. If it was felt that more information was needed to understand what was going on or make a diagnosis, then the parent would also be offered a virtual visit with one of the child psychiatrists, which again could happen virtually right in the school in an appropriate confidential place chaperoned by school personnel and obviously also the parent. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I have an additional question. What about emergency situations, because they do come up?
Yeah. We initially, obviously, those are some of the most troubling and worrisome things that happen in schools, as was, you know, alluded to earlier today about other school districts. The, the initial plan is not for this to be the crisis service for the school, but we're, we're eager to work with the school and kind of work together with the established crisis processes so that they're synergistic. But the goal of this is really more on the prevention side related to crises. And how do we identify kids that are struggling early? How do we offer appropriate treatments for that? And try to avoid some of the crisis situations that can come when those two things don't happen.
Thank you.
Just a quick question with regards to when you initially started. Did you say that with this grant, you really, at this point, would only be two? How many, if, you know?
Schools?
Just two?
I'm sorry. Oh, for schools?
Yeah, for, yes.
Yeah, thank you for that question. No, our goal with the grant is really, the grant money is really to support getting this up and running and the kind of operational work that has to take place to do that. Our goal is that we put in place something that's sustainable long-term. And so in terms of the number of schools, we would start with two. I think defer to Dr. Winborn, but we'd be happy to report back to the board on how that's going. But then the goal would be to provide it to all schools in the district.
I think my question is more from, so if you have a student that needs services, at what point, like how far does it go until eventually it becomes, okay, we've done all we can and now it's, it's back to the family for continuing care and all of that kind of stuff? Like where does that break sort of start to occur?
Thank you. Thanks for the question. That's good. And yeah, the, when we've done this in other districts, usually the interventions are what we consider brief, so kind of seven to 10 sessions maximum. But then as you're getting towards the point where you realize, where there's a realization that this will be a chronic and ongoing thing that needs ongoing care, there's a transition plan that's made. And part of the funding is going to also be educating providers, clinicians, physicians, advanced practice providers in the area about prescribing for mental and behavioral health issues. And part of that transition, if they're getting to seven, eight, nine sessions and they haven't kind of reached their optimal state, then there would be a transition plan to another provider, yeah. So that can be a tricky part. Obviously, we're trying to make sure we are, have capacity to get kids in and in treatment, but also don't want to cut them off from treatment before they're ready.
Because I guess my, my next part to that is then, is there like a segue that you then also help with, you know, like if people don't have insurance care, you know what I mean, and that kind of stuff? Like helping to them figure out what pathway does work for them if, you know, they don't have all the means necessary?
Yes, ma'am. And part of the reason, in addition to wanting it to be local community members, local institutions that are providing this, part of the benefit of doing it through the Health Department is, one, the ability to meet people in terms of what they're able to, in terms of need and pay, and having a sliding scale. And the other is to build the capacity of mental and behavioral health clinicians at the Health Department so that maybe doing long-term treatment in the school isn't appropriate or the issues that are there aren't appropriate. But then there'll be a local agency that they can go to for ongoing treatment or to address things that aren't appropriate for in the schools.
Thank you.
You addressed that most of the, some of the virtual, their session will be held in the school. How you address parents with work schedules?
Yeah. That's, obviously, that's the problem with going to appointments outside the school, too. We've, the way that's happened in the past is that parents sometimes will join virtual sessions from wherever the parent is, and the student can join from the school so that everyone's on the same virtual appointment.
For Zoom session?
Yes, ma'am. Not, we don't use Zoom, but it's same idea. Yeah, yeah.
So earlier, you, you said something sort of interesting that the, the mental health crisis that our kids are seeing, which I'm not arguing at all, was caused by COVID. Could you, could you, could you clarify that a little bit for me, please?
Yeah. I, I, I think we don't know time-wise. That's when there was a lot of worsening of mental health. I didn't mean to imply that the COVID virus worsened mental health. But when you look at just prevalence rates of depression and anxiety, they peaked during and post-COVID.
So possibly exacerbated by?
Possibly exacerbated.
The response to COVID, the response to COVID, maybe like school shutdowns?
Yeah, I don't want to get back, it's not my area of expertise in terms of school administration and like what happened around schools during COVID. But temporally, we know that that's when the mental and behavioral health of children worsened, was up into COVID and then peaked during COVID. And again, like I said, and post-COVID. But actually, there's some suggestion that over the past year, some of the rates seem to have flattened out and started to come down a little bit.
That's good news.
Yeah.
So, so really, though, I mean, I was here month after month during that time period and, you know, listened to our, our Granville Vance Public Health officials advocate for the continued shutdowns and the continued restrictions on our children, which I have very strong feelings and a very strong suspicion has, has made this horrific thing come to fruition with our, our children's mental health. I've seen it in my own children, actually. And so I hope you can understand my reluctance to allow the, the people that sunk the ship to take credit for filling up the lifeboats. I know that our children are in crisis and I, and I do want to help them. But you've said something else now that has me really concerned. You said that you want to make this sustainable for long-term. I don't want to make this sustainable for long-term. I want to fix it. Because if it wasn't a problem before, that means that there was something that changed that caused this, and it needs to be reversed. And our schools are, as, as Commissioner May so eloquently put it, our schools are already responsible for so much every single day, more than academics, which is what our number one task should be. And it worries me to add on another responsibility like this to our administrators and our campuses and our executive team. It really concerns me. And it's not that I don't know that our kids need it. They do. But I feel sometimes like our schools are turning into healthcare centers instead of centers for education. And I want us to be very careful going down this road because it's, it's a slippery slope. And I would like to know, like you said, that, that you want this to be sustainable long-term. What, what does it look like when it's, when we don't need it anymore? How, how can we, how can we make that the goal instead? I don't want it to be sustainable long-term. I want it to be done. So at what point can we make that the goal? To fix the problem that we have now put ourselves in? And, and what has been done to these children? And how can we reverse it and we can, we can make it better?
Yeah. Thank you for the comments. I think we, we share a goal that children don't need, don't have mental and behavioral health problems and don't need treatment for it. I, the other parts of it, I probably am not the right person to comment on, but would defer to the school board and the school administrators in terms of next steps related to that.
I think some of the, the issues that children have mental health issues with can come from family problems at home, social media, it's a variety of things. So when you say sustainable, you're talking about sustainable until the person gets help? Or you're talking about the program being sustainable long-term to be available as needed or?
Yeah. I, I think I actually intended both. So I intended, we didn't want to work with the school district and the Health Department and bring this money and do something for two years, but then say, well, we, we can't support it anymore if the school board and other leaders wanted to keep it. So we're trying to build something that if you all decide it works well and it's something that you want to keep in schools, that that would be available even after the period of funding. So we're just keeping that in mind as we think about what we're creating and putting in place. We don't want children to be getting services and then still need services. And we say, well, we don't have a grant anymore, so we can't do it. So it wasn't my intent to say if we pilot this and it works that it has to be in the schools long-term, for sure. It's up to you all. But we are keeping in mind as we do it, we want to build something that if, if, if all of you want that to stay, that it can stay.
Thank you.
Board members, if I may, I'd just like to add to that, Mike. I, Dr. Steiner, I agree with your, your vision for that. I think ultimately what's going to drive this is the need. You know, this will be coming at the request of parents or the noted concerns of our educators, who right now, when they see an issue, there's nowhere to really go. No, there's, without, without delays, without complicated steps. And, you know, this, in my opinion, this hopefully will be something that will remove those barriers so that our kids can get some quick quality support. And if, you know, if we work ourselves out of a problem, that'd be great. I will applaud that.
Would this in any way deal with drug prevention, addiction issues?
We, we weren't, obviously, there's, thanks for pointing that out. I didn't address that. We weren't planning to directly address that, but are closely kind of talking to the Thrive Program, which does have some programs in the school already that are working on those issues. So we would, again, this is being shaped by the school leaders and the, and the Department of Public Health leaders. So we're, we're happy to do whatever you all think is high priority.
Thank you.
Boy, miss, let me just add one comment. Being a former counselor in Granville County Schools and also a social worker, we've always had kids with mental health problems, just were not addressed. I can remember kids just screaming and hollering. And we called someone to come get them. We did that, then I have Thrive or no one to refer these kids to. There's always been an issue with kids, some problems here. We're just still addressing this in a format that we try and address them now here. And I think it's always going to be here. I mean, it's up to us to try to get the help that they need here. We're not trying to say they, we won't here forever. But I think we'll have human behaviors here, family deterioration, social problems here, isolation. Those problems exist in our school system. And I think that this help here will help us, will clear the path for the kids to do more learning and send, come to school depressed and anxious and things going home, they have no way to express themselves here. They need some way to, an outlet to let them know what they're feeling is okay, plus help for their problem. Could be medication, what case may be. But there will, they have always been kids in Granville County Schools who had mental issues here, but they were not addressed in a format that we try and address them now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Dr. Steiner, thank you so much for taking time out of your very busy schedule to travel up here and, and share your expertise with us. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you and your team. Board members, this is not an action item. This is information. Again, we don't really know what shape this is going to take yet. If the school district ends up receiving monetary portions of this grant that exceed $100,000, of course, we'll need to bring that to you all. I'll, I'll work closely with Eva to keep you guys in the loop. And whatever, at whatever points we may need board approval, we'll, we'll be glad to bring them in. At this point in the process, we're, I think we're good.
I guess my only question, are there any other school districts that are already using these services?
There are. It's a little bit different in every community because we try to have it guided by the community. But we currently have virtual-only counseling and physician services in four school districts in the state. Yeah.
How is it working in those districts?
Great. Very well, yeah. I'd be, I don't have it with me, but I'm happy to provide the, the districts if that's helpful. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and talk and future partnership. Appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Our next item will be item 306, North Carolina School Board Association, title, non-policy revisions, first read.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, Madam Speaker. If I may, I'm, this, I got, is it in any way possible, though, that IT can blow up? Because we can, we back here, we cannot read. It's hard to get this particular screen this far. I, I don't want people to do that. I don't need to interrupt, but I can't, I can't.
I'll refer that to IT. One of the things I'll mention, though, is if, if you have an opportunity and access to computer, generally, our agendas come out on Thursday before our meeting. And you can go in and print the agenda. And if you go for full agenda, you can click on the attachments. And most of what you're seeing up here is going to be what we're doing, so you're welcome.
Madam Chair, I can present the policy updates. This first set of policies has been through the Policy Committee and revised. You will see the version that says after Policy Committee. These updates are provided by the School Board Association to These updates are provided by the School Board Association to implement federal regulations that went into effect on August 1st and they have to do with how we handle Title IX complaints in our school system. As you'll note, I'm sorry, 1725, usually you have a markup showing old policy to new policy, but this is sort of a total overhaul. So instead we have a new policy, 1725, which covers ground previously covered by two policies, which was 1725 and 1726. So the recommendation is to adopt 1725 and also repeal, adopt the new 1725 and repeal 1726. A couple, so when you see strikeouts or red wording on the 1725, that's information that was added, that was not in the original School Board Association template, but that was added locally through the policy committee. One noting that this does not, this policy does not govern participation in athletics, who participates on the team of which sex in athletics is governed by state law and not by this Title IX policy. And then at the end, there is a provision noting that because there's current litigation over the federal Title IX regulation updates, these regulations have taken effect, but it authorizes the administration, if a complaint were to come in, to, to use whichever procedure is applicable or to use the flexibility if there is some litigation to apply the old process if they need to. Other than that, I'll take any questions there may be. This is just a first reading, so this will come back for final approval at the next meeting, unless you wish to waive first reading, a second reading.
Do you want to go ahead and just do 307 now?
Sure.
Just because that's a first read as well.
307 are an additional set of policies that have been updated due to legal changes. These are not as significant as the changes to 1725 that mostly updates. So 1725 is our comprehensive Title IX policy, but it's referenced in a number of other policies, so this is updating those references. 1710 is our general discrimination and harassment policy, just contains some updates mainly semantics and to the references to Title IX. 17, I apologize, 1510, our school safety policy is just an update to legal references. And then a new section at the end, threat assessment teams, which implements a new state law that was passed last summer that establishes a statewide standard for threat assessment teams. Granville County Schools has had threat assessment teams in place for some time, but the state has implemented sort of now a statewide standard for this and for what those teams are supposed to look like. And so that is now reflected here in 1510. Are there questions about that, that policy update?
I have a question about 1725. Because the new one is, the law is already in effect. Is that, is that?
That's right. So the, the regulations went into effect August 1st and they do require school districts to adopt updated policies. There is, has been lawsuits in various states, not including North Carolina, seeking to block enforcement of those regulations and some courts have blocked it temporarily while they go through that litigation. But there is one lawsuit in Kansas where the plaintiffs included a couple of national organizations and that injunction states that the new regulations will not be enforced against any school where those, where there's members of those organizations that have signed their school up. And so we have sort of a mix where some schools, there is one or more members of those plaintiff organizations have signed up and said, you know, that they want to be added to the injunction and have been. So that's why we have, so yes, the regulations are in place and in fact, they are implementing Supreme Court precedent that was already in place.
So my, my question has to do with if we wait until the second read to approve it. Ah, what's the advantage?
Um.
Or is there an advantage?
Well, I will say that, right, the regulations went into effect August 1st, so sooner would be better. Yes.
That's my concern because if it's, if it's the law and we should be abiding by it, then putting it off until October is not going to make a whole lot of difference from my perspective. And the other ones are related because there are things in the other policies that we have for first read, have items in them that you have to have 25, I mean 1725 in order for those to be implemented, right?
That's right. With the exception of 1510, school safety, which is updated, as I said, because of the threat assessment, the state legislation, but I believe these other ones have to do with, yes, with the updated Title IX regulations.
You said there's a suit in Kansas that's affecting this?
That's right.
What do you foresee as far as the timeline when that should be settled? Just curious, how, year, two years?
So right now it's a preliminary injunction, so my hope is, so that is, generally lasts until there's a final ruling, which could take a year. I would hope that they would move expeditiously, but you know, neither Granville County Schools or the state of North Carolina are a party to that suit, so we are in some ways bystanders.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve 1725 on first read, the new one.
And would that include repeal of the old 1726?
Yes.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? The motion passes. So we're doing that on first read? Is that correct?
Yeah.
And then?
We need to.
I think that motion covered 3.06, so then we'll need a second motion for 3.07.
Motion to pass 3.07 on first read?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And now we have a third set of policies. These are part of our general, our regular policy updates. As we're going chapter by chapter, we are in the 7000s now, which is our personnel policies. I'll just highlight, so all of these updates were made in line with recommendations from the state School Board Association. I will note that some of the updates in 7500, workday and overtime, are local updates in discussion with the superintendent and the HR division as far as lunch breaks for hourly employees and, and what that looks like and the workday for our hourly employees. Policy. I think the rest of these, there are two that we recommended, that the policy committee recommended repealing, 7600 employee compensation and 7630 staff insurance and benefits as being outdated. These are both areas that are covered in other policies and by the state public schools employee benefits manual. And so the policy committee and the administration felt that these were extraneous and are always looking for areas to simplify in our policy manual. Any questions about the 7000s?
Motion to approve all policies included in 3.08 on first read and repeal 7600 and 7630.
Second.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I think now is when we're adding 309, what you had talked about when we adjusted the agenda. I'll turn that over to you, Ms. Hayes.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Chairwoman. Also, could I, could I get you to pass some of these to the board members? So as most of you guys know, we have a policy that says that we are to recognize Constitution Day and Citizenship Day with our students in our district and that falls on September 17th. So you may have heard Dr. Wimborn talk about, so there's a plan to have a voter registration drive, nonpartisan, with the Board of Elections in our high schools. And so I was working on or thinking to myself, what could we do for other students? So I found this organization that their, their only goal is to provide these very nice and free pocket constitutions to every eighth grader in the state of North Carolina. And I didn't, I apologize for not bringing you this in time for the agenda, but I wasn't sure that they were going to arrive in time and so I didn't want to bring it up if it wasn't going to happen because I didn't know how long shift was going to take. But I'm really excited. They have sent us enough for every eighth grader in the county and I am hoping that some of our wonderful eighth grade teachers would invite us to come deliver them into their classrooms. I have been personally invited by one of our eighth grade teachers and so I don't know like if that's something that other eighth grade teachers would want to do, but I was hoping that maybe board members, and I've also talked to Chairman Karen about it, if we wanted to just make ourselves available as local representatives to go into classrooms and talk about the role of local government and what that might have to do with our constitution and celebrating that, that day and, and what it means for our students. So that's, I just wanted to, to propose that, I guess, to the board, so you know, like I, I hope we're all looking for more opportunity to, to be in our classrooms and interact with our students and tell them about our role as board members. And so if the board is amenable, I would, I would love for Dr. Wimborn, Dr. Wimborn to spearhead that and, and let it be known that we're, we're available for invitations to classrooms.
This is nice. Really nice.
I was super excited. I was hoping that you guys would be too.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Nice to meet you. I mean, if I want to look at the Constitution, I have to look it up on the internet.
And that's all, and that's simply all it is? There's nothing else in there except for the Constitution? So I'm just really excited to be able to, to provide that for our, our students and hopefully do it every year from now on, fingers crossed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we move to item, to consent items. 401, we have minutes from our August 5th 24 regular meeting. And August 13th, meet special meeting. And do we want to get a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve consent items 4.01 and 4.02 is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item, 403, is policy revisions from 6424 Committee Meeting, second read. Do you want to mention anything about that?
I don't think so. This, these are on consent because they have been previously reviewed.
Okay. Do we need to vote on these?
I mean, you can have a motion to disapprove the whole consent.
Okay.
Motion to approve entire consent items list.
Sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll take care of a page or two. And that takes us through our contracts as well. Our next item would be then academic success. Mr. Perry, thank you.
All right. Good evening, board members. Tonight we have two presentations. The first one's relatively brief, just kind of highlights our summer reading challenge as well as a little bit of information regarding attendance from last year. As the year progresses, we'll provide more information, more relevant data from our beginning of the year testing that our students are beginning to take as far as our common assessments and benchmarks and things of that nature. So we just had a couple of schools to begin some of that beginning of the year testing. Third grade BOB testing, of course, is, was completed earlier, so we'll share more information as the time comes. But we'd like to start off by recognizing some students this evening who participated in our summer reading challenge. Next slide. You'll see a list of participants from each of the schools and we want to thank those students for participating, for reading and the number of minutes they read over the summer break. Last year, last school year, we did provide texts, again, from Scholastic to our students, each, to each household that was involved last year, so each family did receive a set of books. But these students, these students went above and beyond and read additional books during the course of the summer, so we definitely want to recognize them. Some individual schools have made recognitions as well for these students, but we want to recognize our challenge winners. So our next slide. So you'll notice here, each of our winners will receive a $50 gift card. So our top winner is Leody Overbee from Stovall Shaw Elementary School with 3,803 minutes read. Grades three through five, David Spruill at Butler STEM, 2,648 minutes. Our middle grades, it's Jaden Creach from Butler STEM Middle School with 1,295 minutes. And high school is Mr. Bradley Gray, Granville Central High School with 3,655 minutes. Our academic team has been meeting and we are working on ways to continue to provide students with opportunity to have authentic literacy opportunities to increase the amount of reading that they're doing, not only in their classrooms, but outside of schools as well. So you'll hear more information as we begin to craft and develop opportunities for students. So congratulations to those students. We will make sure that you get your Scholastic gift cards and I believe we also have some ice cream tokens for our other participants and we'll make sure that you'll receive those as well. So again, congratulations. Next up, we want to recognize our best attendance and our most improved attendance for the 2023-2024 school year. Best attendance for our traditional schools went to Wilton Elementary School and most improved was Northern Granville Middle School. So congratulations to those two schools. We'll begin to kick off our attendance procedures and ramp that up again this year with making sure that we are meeting in alignment with our strategic goal plan of 96.5.
So is there like an actual trophy that they?
Yes. I should have brought it. It is actually a large trophy. It looks very similar to the one on the screen. So we have two. One that says best attendance for the month and the other says best attendance, best, most improved attendance for the month. So for last year, the, those schools will be able to keep the attendance for the year. We just received our new attendance trophies this morning, so for 2024, 2025, we will not be able to share anything on our meeting this week because we've not been in school for a full month yet, so by October, we should have some information for you, for our winners. So next slide deck is our accountability, test and accountability update. And just as Dr. Wimborn alluded, kudos to our teachers and students and all of our school staff, parents, everyone who helped work with our students over the course of the last year with the results of, from the last school year, academic proficiency and growth that students made lots of things to celebrate and schools have reasons to celebrate, but we still want to continue to push higher and for stronger proficiency and greater growth. So next slide, if you notice, we have our three strategic plan goals. 100% of our schools to meet or exceed growth by 26, 27. 100% of our, all schools to earn a C performance grade or better. And our strategic goal three, 50% of our students to meet grade level proficiency. And we'll see how we kind of stacked up to those proficient. And we'll see how we kind of stacked up to those proficient, those goals in just a few minutes. So, our next slide. So, I wish you could see this a little bit larger, but it is a little bit of a mock report card about our overall testing data, and it lists which, our letter grades for each individual school, which schools met growth, and which schools exceeded growth. In 2023-2024, if you notice, 80% of our schools met or exceeded growth. And the last time that happened was around 2017, 2018, pre-pandemic. Compared to last year, there were 56.3, 56.3% of our schools actually met or exceeded growth. So, our schools have been working very hard. Students have been working very hard, and thank you to your parents and board members for your support over the course of the year. Next, next slide, please. So, this is a little, let me interpret this one just a little bit. So, if you're looking at this chart here, this is completed by Ms. Rice. She could not be here today. But if you look at column two, which is reading, column three is math, highlights the growth, the school's growth in those, in those subject areas. The third column, which is overall, is the overall growth, and then you see the achievement, which is rated at 80%, and then the actual performance grade that each school received. The way the metrics kind of set up, a school that's not meet growth, that they are at negative two or four, negative two or below. 1.99 to 2.0 is meeting growth, and exceeding growth is greater than 2.0. So, if you notice there, if you look in the green, those are our schools that met growth in those subject areas. And the, if you scroll down just a little bit, Ms. Connor? There's a guide, there's a key at the bottom. Just keep going. There you go. So, blue is high growth, green is met growth, and pink did not meet growth. So, it shows you each school and how they stack up.
So, that's, that's a little confusing, having negative numbers that still met growth. That's why I was looking at the chart, and I was like, what, what is going on?
That's how the Evas growth measure is set up. Yeah. It's negative. So, toward higher, beyond that 2.0, you are exceeding growth. So, you notice there, we, all of our schools have something to celebrate, something they have accomplished over the course of the year. But if you take a look at that last column, which is our performance grades, it's a 15-point grading scale, and we want to get, make sure that our schools are at a C or better. A C is a grade, a grade of 55. So, eight of our schools are close to a grade of a 55, not including those that are already there. So, there's a potential for our schools to really meet or exceed our growth, our strategic goal of having our schools at a level C. Based on their results from last year and the work that they've put forth, we are on the mark, making moves and making strides.
Mr. Perry, say that one more time. I want to make sure everyone hears what you said.
Eight schools, if you look at there, we already have, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, that are already above a C, C or above. But we are very close to having all of our schools at a level C or above, and that is our goal, to make sure we can get our, of course, we want As and Bs for all of them. But moving from Fs to Ds and Ds to Cs, we are showing some tremendous gains for our students. We want to continue to increase our students' proficiency and not rely heavily on growth because we definitely want to make sure our students are college and career and scoring at level four and five. Next slide, please. So, if you compare to last year, here's our progress. 80% of our schools met or exceeded growth, and that's up 50, up to 56% from, well, that last school year, we were at 56.3%. So, from 56.3 to 80%, that's something to celebrate. From previous year, 37.5%, that was the number of schools that were at, earned a C or better. All right. So, 46 this past year. So, we're getting, we're getting there. We're making growth. And number three, 41% of our students met grade level proficiency, and we're trying to get to 50 or higher. So, our progress, 41.4% there. The slide deck is, there we go. Has a mind of its own this evening. Go all the way to the bottom, please. I might have to. Okay. Well, 41.4% of GPS students met grade level proficiency. 30, 28 point, 26.7% of schools are at or above 50%. In the previous year, 18% of our schools were at or above 50%. Okay?
Mr. Perry, if I may interrupt, you mind? So, you know, Mr. Perry and I have talked about this a lot. Our goal, our near-term goal is that 50% of our students are at proficiency. And that might sound like a real low mark, that only half of our kids would be proficient on all of the state tests. But if we were to hit that goal, we would be far above the state average. So, I kind of want to keep that relative for everybody. You know, I think that one thing to remember is when it comes to these state standardized tests, they are norm-referenced, okay? It's not like you take a test, and if you get nine questions out of 10 correct, you get 90%. That's not the way these work, okay? So, it is difficult to, as you pointed out, Ms. Hayes, looking at negative numbers that somehow mean something good. It's really hard to explain this to the public and for the average person to wrap their heads around it. You know, for us to say, oh, half of our kids are proficient on the test, that we're proud of that. When, what does it take to be proficient, you know? And how does the state set up those cut scores? The more you dig into it.
And particularly for grades three through eight, whether that's a reading test, a math test, or a science test, whereas high school has more metrics for accountability.
So, I just wanted to offer that, you know, kind of observation.
Right.
Correct.
So, norm based on what kids are scoring, norm.
Across the state.
That's right. They take all the results and put them in a big bell curve. Mm-hmm.
All right. So, our last slide, we just want to continue to focus on what our academic goals are, and that is high student engagement for the year, rigorous assessments and common bench, common assessments and benchmarks, and strong PLCs. So, we'll be working with our schools to continue to revamp the PLC process, make sure those meetings are being held effectively and efficiently, making sure that students have an opportunity for remediation and intervention. So, we will, our principals already asked, and when can I, when will you give me my tutoring budget? Said after tonight. So, we're ready to begin some remediation. Middle schools, secondary instructional resource specialists, our coaches are kind of working more heavily there to make sure that those students are reading ready for high school. And also, we will continue to emphasize authentic literacy, providing students an opportunity to read more. Remember, this is also, even though it's a math test, there were problems. Students have to know what they're, understand what they're reading, so become more fluent in, fluent readings. I do want to point out that this year, we do have a new science curriculum by the state, a new science standards. And with that, there's always a change in the assessment, the change in model, and the change in, the assessment type. So, we are understanding and we are learning that this test will be a little bit different from our traditional fill-in-the, fill-in-the-blank assessments, where it's actually more guided by the student assessment, and more opportunities for students to actually apply what they've learned through a lab, lab-based, through their labs, through opportunities and journaling and things that are done, but it's not a fill-in-the-blank kind of assessment. So, a new assessment this year, which means a re-norming process. So, typically, the state always sees a drop in those sign scores when that happens. Any additional questions? Thank you. And I think we're next as well. I do want to add, there's a more detailed accountability model report there. If you would like a printed copy, we can provide you with one, but it's about 13 pages. You can, if you want some good bedtime reading, want to dive deeper into the details, more information about how the model is set up and how our district looks, you can take a look at this accountability update provided by Ms. Rice.
Thank you for your leadership and your team for making sure our scores were going up and not down.
Thank you. Great team, great group of teachers, leaders here in the district, and our students and parents are amazing here.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share with you, you know how I am about science and what our kids are doing in the classroom. So, I did, I did want to tell you, I'm really excited about the new science curriculum. Bless you. And my son was sharing with me that they've already done two hands-on experiments, which is one more than they did in the entirety of last year. So, I'm, I'm really, really excited to see the positive change.
This new curriculum is more hands-on.
Yes.
So, the standards are, we have to, actually have, the students have to apply what they're learning. So, labs are the best way to do that.
Thank you for that, because I'm, I'm so excited to see it.
So, next up, we'll hear from Ms. Hunt, who is our Senior Director of Federal Programs, to discuss our consolidated federal budget, and she'll give us updates regarding that, those funding sources.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I am here to talk to you about our federal programs update. NCDPI requires that local boards of education review the proposed federal spending each year prior to submitting a LEA's consolidated federal application. The consolidated federal application consists of the four entitlement federal grants that are awarded to districts across the nation annually. The federal grants are given to state agencies, and then state agencies disseminate the funds to the local LEAs based on student enrollment and poverty rates. The consolidated federal application includes Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV, Part A. This presentation provides an overview of the purpose, planning allotment, and budget allocations for each other federal grants that will be included in our federal application. Our LEA must allocate funding to the required set aside for each federally mandated initiative. The figures noted are subject to change based on feedback received from the state. As you can see on the slide before you, this is one of our, Title I is one of our largest grant awards. The purpose is to provide supplemental assistance to our schools that serve high percentages of low-income families to ensure that all students are able to meet state standards. Title II, Part A, provides districts with supplemental support to build teacher and principal capacity. Title III has two components. One is the first, is the language acquisition, and these funds provide districts with supplemental support to ensure our English learners are able to achieve English language proficiency and are able to master the standards. And then, lastly, we have Part IV funds that are used to provide students with opportunities to become well-rounded students. Grant initiatives include safety, healthy, and technology initiatives. Next slide, please.
I have a question.
Do we have Title I services at all of our elementary schools now?
At all of the elementary schools, yes. So, as you can see on the screen, these are our Title I schools for this year, and these are the preliminary funds that they will be receiving. The Title I funds are allocated to district-wide initiatives and Title I school-based initiatives, with the school-based initiatives receiving the largest share of the funding. All 10 of our Title I schools are provided with an allocation that is based on poverty rate and student enrollment. The majority of total school-based allocations are spent on staffing. Principals have the autonomy to determine how to spend the remaining funds with their teachers. However, those funds may be spent on evidence, on base strategies that are in accordance with the school's comprehensive needs assessment results and their school improvement or school-wide plans, goals, and action steps. Next slide, please. Here is the Title I program district set aside. This is the set aside for this year's budget. As you can see, we have reserved reservations for parent and family engagement and supports for our homeless foster care and neglected and delinquent programs, Title I pre-K, district initiatives, and professional development, reservations for the overall implementation and administration of the grant fund. In carryover, this past year, we did have $728,885.46. These funds were spent on our summer initiatives, where we had our summer school that we had to pay for our staff, we had summer bridge, our book bus, we had our summer curriculum work with our teachers, with updating our curriculum units for this year, and then we also paid for staffing positions. Next slide. This is our Title II program allocations, and this does include the carryover and this current year. As you can see, we have money set aside for quality PD for our educators, where we will have AP Academy, where we do pay for some instructional support and professional development. We also help with recruitment and retention by paying, beginning teacher support for our mentors, our BT program, and tuition reimbursement, and then also administering and implementation of the support of the program, where we pay some of the salary for the BT coordinator, the professional development coordinator, our indirect costs, and then our equitable services is for our private school. Next slide, please. Title III, this also includes the carryover and the budget for this year. As you can see, the set asides are for professional development for our ESL teachers. We also have our elevation software that houses all of our scores, all of our ESL students, where teachers can see that information, summer curriculum design work with our ESL teachers, our lead ESL teacher, and then supplies that are needed to make sure that we are carrying out the program. Next slide. The next slide is Title IV. This also includes the carryover and the current year. As you can see, we have set asides for safe and healthy students, where we pay a part of a social worker's position, as well as we have funds set aside for SEL material. Also, we have well-rounded education, where we also pay for our choice program partnership with Wilton, with our Leader Me program, and Mount Energy with our positivity project. Also, salary comes from there. We also do ACT prep work, where we have outside company coming in to work with our 11th graders to help with our ACT scores, and then secondary, summer bridge, and CDT work. So, if they are not a Title I school, the same thing that we do in Title I, those funds come from out of this pot of allocations. And then for technology, we have our learn platform for the district, where our teachers can go on and do PD, and then our Qualtrics system is where we do all of our surveys, and it is where we do our, primarily our walkthrough, where we house all of our walkthrough data. Next slide. I'm recommending that the federal consolidated programs plan be approved by the board. Are there any questions?
This is an action item. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Ms. Hunt, thank you very much for your hard work and leadership. You've done a fantastic job with this. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
That's a lot of buckets to manage, a lot of reports to write. Okay, our next item is fiscal responsibility. Ms. Hines.
Good evening, board members. We'll start today with our first financial update for the year, and this is a summary of our COVID funds as of July 31st. And again, this is the summary page from the front. You can see that our funds remaining total just over 500,000. And that, again, is as of July 31st. I can guarantee you that that number is much lower at this point. We are well on our way to spending down those funds by the end of this month as all of those S dollars are, are going away. Where, we do have a couple of, you can see that, that, let's see, PRC 191, you can see there haven't been any expenditures, and that is, that is money that is going to be reverted because we haven't been able to fulfill the needs of, the requirements of that grant funding. Disappointing, but we don't have that money, so it's just, it's, we have not seen that money. So, I just wanted to update you on that. We are going, since this, all these funds expire at the end of this month, the plan is to come to you all at the next board meeting with more comprehensive information about how the funds have been spent overall and just where we have landed at the end of all of this. And if you have any specific requests for that information, please let, please reach out and let me know. Okay? And we can discuss that at the Finance Committee meeting as well. Any questions about the COVID funds? Next month, the rest is just that lovely spreadsheet that you guys so enjoy looking at every month that really just summarizes how the funds have been used since the very beginning of the allocation. And, thank you. And again, that is informational. And again, that is informational. Next month, on the financial update, we'll see another, we'll be back to providing that information, as well as the regular board travel reports and the financial updates. The next item is the budget resolution. I am very excited to present to you the budget resolution. Can you actually pull up the presentation instead? This is the, this is the budget resolution, but what you really want is the real information that's in that budget resolution. This is a very early budget resolution compared to the last several years, so I'm very excited to present this to you tonight. That blue chart is a look at how our funds break down, basically by fund. You can see that our state funds remain our largest percentage at 53% of our funding. Local, and this is again, these are the amounts that are in the budget resolution. The local is 24% of our budget. You'll notice that I've broken down the federal budget into three different sections. The federal fiscal year is different from our fiscal year, so it's important to remember that we're always going to be dealing with more than one year at a time. So I really wanted to break down what our year five, that's our current year funding, is 4.2 million. Our carryover funding is 2.8 million. And then, of course, we have COVID funds that were remaining at that point of 902,000. Capital outlay, 4.8 million, child nutrition, community schools, other restricted. Our total budget overall, our total funding available is just over $102 million. What's important to recognize in the budget resolution that's coming before you is that due to state modernization efforts, our federal funds have not been approved yet. We don't have any of that approved, and so I don't feel comfortable pulling it in to our budget resolution until we have approved budgets. So this budget resolution does not include any of our federal funds. That'll come to you as an amendment later on, as soon as those come through as approved. So the budget resolution that we're actually dealing with is that $94 million figure. Does that make sense? So all of the numbers that you're going to see later on, as we discuss the budget, reflect that $94 million amount. The chart on the right is just a really a summary of our county appropriation for the year. You'll notice that current expense is what we consider our local funds, but there's a difference in that amount. And again, that difference relates to our use of fund balance, and we'll touch on that in just a little bit.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Now, that current expense amount is, that includes what we would be sending to charter schools, is that correct?
Correct, yes. Yes, and you'll see that break down a little bit later as well. All right, next slide, please. So of our total budget resolution of that $94 million, you see that 71% of that budget goes, is for salary and benefits. That is right in line with how we generally run our budget. Salary and benefits is a huge cost in the district, in the state, in the country for that matter. Our operating costs take up 19% of our budget. Capital assets right now are set at 5%. Transfers and other, that's where we get to the charter school cost. It's charter schools as well as a transfer amount that we provide to child, that we're required to provide to child nutrition of 45,000. But the vast majority of that is what we have estimated to go to charter schools. Granted, that's an estimate based on last year's numbers. We don't have all of the enrollment figures from this year, so that may have to be updated as we move forward. Next slide, please. This is the same budget amount, but broken down by purpose, because this is the way you see the budget resolution. And just as a reminder, all of those, all of those items in the top section that begin with the five, those refer to our instructional services, and that is, of course, where most of our expenses lie. 66% of our expenses fall within instructional services, and you can see the vast majority of that is our regular instructional services. That second section that begins, that item, the numbers begin with six, that's our system-wide support services, and that's 24% of our budget. I want to point out that 65 operational support services, that's a pretty, pretty big line compared to the other areas. What's important to know is that that is our transportation, our maintenance, and our custodial support. That's a big chunk of that part of that budget. Again, system-wide support is 24% of the budget. That next area that begins with the seven, that's our community schools program after school, and also our child nutrition program, that's about 5% of our budget. And then, of course, we go back to those transfers, those charter school and child nutrition transfers, that total about 5% of the budget. Any questions related to this? All right, next slide, please. Local fund balance. This is what makes me sweat just a little bit. So as we've talked about many, many times, generally, general, generally accepted fund balance is about 8%. That comes out to be about two months of operational funds. For the 2425 budget, that totals about $6.2 million, that 8%. There's a lot of debate about 8% and whether that's required or not. We're not going to get into that at this moment. But I do want to let you know where we land, where this budget that I'm presenting to you today lands us. We started the 2324 school year with $7.8 million in fund balance, and this is the unaudited use of fund balance for 2324 was about 2.2 million. Excuse me. And that, I would anticipate that we would begin this current school year with 5.6 million in fund balance. The budget as it's presented to you today includes the use of $4.1 million in fund balance, which would leave us with 1.5 million estimated at June 30th, 2025. And that would leave us with about 2% fund balance. And we've talked about before, you know, I've presented the potential use of fund balance to you in previous months as we prepared for this. That's a little bit higher than the amount we, because I had, we had discussed 3.7 million before, but then we had an additional decrease in our state funds, and of course, that always has to shift. As, and of course, part of the issue is, we don't always find out about our funding at a time that we can make effective moves, changes to our funding. So this fund balance, Dr. Winborn and I have already discussed, again, makes me sweat quite a bit. I'm very uncomfortable with that number. And we have discussed that obviously doesn't take a genius to say that this is not sustainable. And we've discussed that we're going to make it a priority this year to continue to look at ways to correct the situation. We've discussed the issue before of efficiencies. A good chunk of this is due to our efficiencies or lack of. But there are some other, there are some other priorities from ESTR that we decided that were priorities for this district, and we've continued those, and we've chosen to use local fund balance to cover those costs. However, because it's still a significant amount, Dr. Winborn and I have discussed making it a priority in the finance committees and with our own departments to continue to make those adjustments that are needed to the budget this year. And we'll have to do that. So again, that would leave us with 1.5 million in fund balance at the end of this year. Next slide, please. And of course, if there are any questions regarding that fund balance, but moving forward, the recommendation is to approve the 2425 budget resolution as presented.
Madam Chair, if I may?
I would like to thank Vicki for her hard work on getting us to this point, and I think you certainly summarized my thinking about this as well. That 4.1 million has got, we've got to find a way to bring that down during the course of this year. But there's just, there's no denying it, that we are on an unsustainable course.
Do you anticipate, Ms. Hines, this is, there's no right or wrong answer, but do you anticipate that that figure is worst-case scenario as opposed to possibly there might be some funds saved here and there?
I am hoping that's a worst-case scenario, because that, you know, our budget does include all of our vacancies, and so, I mean, because we have to budget for those, for those vacancies. So I'm hoping, you know, little things here and there, you know, I found out one little chunk that, you know, just on Friday afternoon, that we'll be saving. So I anticipate that this is worst-case scenario. However, realistically, things happen. Everything's an emergency, and everything's a priority. So it's a challenge. It's a challenge.
I'm not holding you to what you said, because you really don't have a crystal ball.
Do not, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah.
Out of a general curiosities, with this being the first year that we're starting from zero-based budgeting, how much did we save compared to last year?
I don't have the exact figure, but it was over $1 million that we saved with the zero base.
That's awesome.
Which is amazing, which is terrifying at the same time, but it is amazing.
I mean, motion to approve budget as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
I should pass this with a prayer.
I want to thank you, Ms. Hines, and your team.
Thank you.
I can't say enough about your group. Board Members, they are usually the last ones out the building, and some of the first ones there. And I want to make it really clear that this is, you and the finance team, this is your work, but you do not own this problem. You know, your job is to present the most accurate, correct information possible.
I greatly appreciate that.
And I don't, I certainly don't want you to feel the weight of the world solely on your shoulders.
I agree.
The fact that you're bringing us this really unfiltered, straight-shooting picture is what I think we all need, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the board, do you want to take a five-minute break or a 10-minute break and wait on this, or?
I probably just barrel through, to be honest.
You want to go plow through it? Okay, we'll do that.
As anybody else.
All right. School reorganization. I'm turning that over to you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Tonight, we have brought to you, per your request, two reports, and I'm not going to call them studies, because they really aren't, but these are just informational reports. One of them is an analysis of our high schools, our traditional high schools, I should say. This does not include Granville Early College. That was not part of the analysis. And then a separate document, which is an analysis of the middle schools. And again, per your request, we have tried to provide as much information as possible, and really, we organized it according to our strategic priorities, what it would look like if we went from three traditional high schools to two, and what it would look like if we went from three traditional middle schools to two. Again, without trying to provide, you know, too much direction about which particular schools we're talking about, I think some of this becomes apparent when you look at maps and other things, but again, that's for your, that is your decision about what direction we take on this. The bottom line, Mr. Peace, as you so fondly say, is that this could result conservatively in the savings of almost, recurring savings of almost $3 million a year, approaching that number. I want to caution everybody, we tried to put on the very first page of both of these documents at the bottom, a little disclaimer. The data contained in these reports are still subject to final review. You know, it was a lot to pull together in a short time, but we did our best work, tried to give the most accurate information as possible. Some of this is a moving target, though, and what we're saying now may be different in a year from now. So these are our best educated guesses and projections, and so please just kind of take that into consideration. I wasn't planning on going through these, you know, line by line, but I'm more interested in just receiving your feedback, seeing if there are additional questions, and then thinking about our next steps. We have, in the timeline that you approved, a work session scheduled for September 23rd. Am I right? Is that 23rd? Two Mondays from now, at which time we could bring you sort of the next step. If you, tonight, were to direct us to identify specific schools and come up with a first draft of a study or studies, we could do that for you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on the gentleman that made public comment tonight, in a scenario where he was talking about the one high school.
Uh-huh. One high school, right?
Yeah.
From three to one?
Right. Just for informational purposes, what would that mean distance-wise for somebody on northern Granville?
Well, so, it's interesting, you know, we have a very large county geographically. It is about 45 miles from north to south and over 20 miles east to west, and that's by the crow flies. It can take you just almost an hour to get from the Virginia border all the way down to the southern county line. You know, Oxford is actually geographically in the dead center of our county. A lot of times, we think of, oh, Oxford is in the north. And Austin, did we bring in that large map? Yeah, so actually, I located this map of the county, and you guys can look at it during the break, if you like, but it's, it's got the townships overlaid, which are not really helpful, but, you know, you can see, there's Oxford, and I mean, again, that's halfway.
The center.
And it's deceptive, because a lot of times, we think of it more in the northern part of the county, but it's a good 20, 25 miles, so it's out there, and vice versa. So the idea of having one high school would be wonderful.
But how long would kids be on a bus?
It would be a very long bus ride. Plus, also, we don't have a campus that can accommodate 1,800 high school students right now. You would have to have, I don't know, dozens and dozens of local students.
Yeah, I was, I just felt like, since it was mentioned, it would be worth just seeing the feasibility, or not the feasibility of the suggestion.
My bottom line is that we don't entertain that much. I mean, there's no way we can do that, from my perspective. And I think the gentleman that came was interested in saving this school. I mean, if you do what he's talking about, then General Central would... I mean, if you do what he's talking about, then Grand Central would be the ideal place to do it. But, well, that's just my opinion.
Yes, sir.
You guys might not agree, but...
So to answer your question, Ms. Williams, it's not feasible to have a single high school at this time, without, you know, major investment, you know?
So whatever you'd save, you'd probably wouldn't save, plus the distance. I agree.
So again, board members, I'm happy to, you know, myself or any member of the team, because we, we put these together as a team, each one of us sort of focusing on our area and then going through everything together. Anything specific?
It may be in here. I read it a few days ago. But just thinking about the safety issue in our schools, can you just talk about how that would work as far as maybe improving more coverage at our high schools, middle schools?
Right. So again, it's, it goes back to this notion of concentrating our resources. So whether it would be more SRO coverage, or more administrators, or, you know, having more teachers in a building to cover the same amount of space, you know, just generally, the more efficient we can be, the better we can use our people. Just generally speaking. Team, is there anything you wanted to add, or something I might have overlooked important?
Can you remind us, based on your timeline, since I don't have it in front of me, what was like for, for the timeline to proceed in the smoothest way? What's the objective of today, based on each of the timelines? And also, if you could reiterate, is a study, like formally, is a study, study needed for any consolidation as part of the domino effect? Okay. So I guess, yeah, what's, what's necessary today to happen?
Yeah, and I'll defer to Ms. Dubison on that, but about the format and the wording and such. But the, the timeline, thank you for asking, and I'm sorry I didn't put that back up again, but the goal was for a decision to be made at the November 4th meeting, and so we just kind of walked backwards from there. Because that is sort of like, after that, that's the point of no return, we really would be unable to implement. And of course, you'd also be swearing in new board members at the December meeting, which sort of further complicates things. You know, if, anything after November is not, was not doable for the following year.
But remind me what part of that was happening today? Was it to initiate what we would be studying? Like, what was today's domino?
That's right. So the September 9th, today's meeting, our goal for the administration was to present draft studies, and then your role is to provide feedback and additional instructions. What, that's up, for, up, up to you to determine what those are. At the work session, we could then potentially present draft number two of studies, rather than reports. You could tell us tonight, look at school XYZ, and put it in the form of a study, right? So, Ms. Dubison?
Right. So before any decision, final decision on a school, school consolidation or closure, there's two things the board needs. One, to cause a study to be done that includes certain factors. You've been through these before. And two, to have a public hearing. So most of the information that would comprise a study has been gathered here, but these are not studies of specific schools. And so in order to make a final study, I think the administration needs to sort of narrow it down to a specific proposal, one or more. You can study two things and then choose one of them. And then would create those written studies that address the factors that need to be addressed, such as transportation, cost, welfare of the students, education offerings.
So the idea is, based on the information that I've sort of gathered, is what we need to do, is close at least one high school, and one middle school, and possibly an elementary school. I mean, now, so what we need to name those schools, I mean, if it's going, if it's going to be Grand Central that closes, we need to say, that's what we need to stay on. I mean, so if we stay, we're going to study Grand Central and South Granville. I mean, what would be the point? Board?
To give them multiple proposals would just be more work for them.
Yeah, that's...
Is that, is that the point you're trying to make?
Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay.
And the same thing applies to elementary, I mean, to middle. So at some point, this board got to decide what we need to study. And it doesn't necessarily mean that that's the one we're going to close, but we got to study it before we can do anything.
So let me understand what we're saying here. What he says here is, this is an analysis of the middle school, and analysis of the high school. So we need to invest that first, right? I mean, I haven't seen that. So versus a study, if we do one of them, could we take this step first versus then the study? I'm just trying to see exactly the steps here.
Well, see, I'm looking at it in, as the timeline, it's November, what he said, November 4th. I mean, that's just a rocks throw away. I mean, unless we are going to move that timeline, we need to do some stuff.
For sure.
And we can sit around the table and talk about doing some stuff all you want to, but some stuff has to be done. In two months, really, two and a half.
I mean, I mean, from my perspective, and I don't want to be, I mean, I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to talk, because that's technically what we're supposed to do. But from my perspective at least, I, I feel like one of the ways to parse this out is purely just geographically. I mean, because, you know, separate from the finances, the maintenance budget, all of that kind of stuff, I mean, the ones in the center of the, the county, and the ones in the southern, like, the southern half of the county can't, I mean, really geographically seem like the only two options if we're going down to two. And I don't know how creative we can be with that. And that's, that's the thing that I see as a limitation. So I mean, like, from my perspective, I feel very compelled by the, like, just the geography of the decision. And if somebody has a creative idea that doesn't factor that in the same, I mean, I'm all ears on that. Because I was very sensitive to what the guy that was saying, you know, the person that spoke with public comment, I missed his name earlier, because I was in the car. But, I mean, like, you know, him speaking to middle schoolers not needing that size of a parking lot and stuff, that's going to be a common denominator at any school, right? Like, none of those are going to have things, right? So like, from a creative perspective, what are non-common denominators that wouldn't be, you know, in, in every situation ubiquitously? Like, I'd be all ears to those things, because to me, the thing that seems the most obvious is just geography.
Speaking specifically about parking lots, I did consider the fact that all three of our high schools do in fact have parking lots, and so no matter which one we close, or if, if we close one and turn it into a middle school, we will have the same problem at all three locations. So while I appreciate it being pointed out, it, it's, it's going to be the same problem no matter which campus we, we go with, so.
South Granville and Webb both have track also, correct?
Correct.
Got it. But Central does not.
And like, and I guess to confirm audibly what geography would mean, I mean, like, it seems that, you know, closing and consolidating G.C. Holly's new campus, which we've all agreed was a temporary one, based on how things are, like, formulating academically or athletically and stuff like that, the facilities just, you know, are bursting at the seams. Consolidating that with Butler Stadium Middle into Granville Central's campus, and to then having Central split to divide into J.F. Webb and then South Granville, purely geographically seem like they most, make the most sense. And it would also be interesting, because we would then have, of the high school buildings, we would have a middle school in the best-looking building that has the best outlay for, I mean, facility plan projections and stuff like that, in a way that we'd be able to not worry about the maintenance side of that for an incredible amount of time, right? And then we could reallocate the resources to the facility, we'd be closing down, well, if we're consolidating Butler Stadium Middle, that's got, I mean, like, just the budget for that's maintenance, as well as, you know, New Holly's maintenance and whatnot. I mean, wipe out the full maintenance budget of, like, J.F. Webb or South Granville. So I mean, like, we'd be able to net out where we'd have effective savings of, like, potentially 10 million. Geographically, it makes the most sense, and I'm sensitive to all the iterations of that. But like, if anybody has something more creative than that outside of geographics, I'm all ears.
Thank you, Mac. A good point about the maintenance, because we are looking at our operating budget, but when you add into it the potential maintenance needs at our high schools, you know, it's a lot.
And I think the only, like, really niche, really specific thing that I would appreciate on top of this is how urgent the outstanding maintenance things are. Because like, maybe Webb's 10 million is infinitely more urgent than South Granville's 10 million, you know? I don't, I don't know those things, that might be interesting. It would have to be highly compelling for it to overstate the geography at all. But that's interesting to me. And just in case the public is listening and doesn't have this in front of them, I mean, we're operating at both of our high schools and middle schools, all being at about 70% capacity, not from students being there, but from like, how much of the actual building are we using? So like, we have a lot of opportunity to consolidate, repurpose, be more efficient, all of the other benefits that come from the financial savings of this, whether it's safety, whether it's, you know, robust athletic and academic offerings, like, there's so much that comes from this. I just can't see anything more creative than geography.
To the, the teacher positions, the way they're allocated, I mean, academically, it's, it's going to have to make sense, because if we don't have those positions, to keep those positions at three high schools, you'd have to come up with even more money.
Yes, ma'am, that's a great point. I'm sorry to interrupt you. And I, I hope everyone appreciates that we really put academics front and center. I mean, this, it is undeniable, the increased opportunities that our students, our children are going to get as a result of this. It, it is really startling how evident that is when you, when you lay it out in these charts.
And all I'd like to say is that, like, again, I keep coming back to the geography at all. These things that we're looking at right now, they're public record. People in the community can read these things as part of the agenda, and if you, I mean, if we say that, I've named the ghost as like, what the most geographically obvious answer is, you know what I mean? And if anybody has access to this, has opinion, has time to dig into it and come up with something creative, I mean, we have time for that to manifest in a way that we can still make a difference and change something to be more creative. I'm all ears. I'm just naming the thing that seems the most obvious geographically. So anybody in the community can workshop this and come up with something, and that would be, we would be all ears to that.
And on top of all of the academic perks that would come from consolidating resources, I would also like to not have to cancel any more high school football seasons. That, that would be amazing if we could get to the point where we...
That really upset me, having just read that in the paper. It was just sad.
I, yeah, it devastated me.
And I understand why.
Devastated me. And, and the point that we're at with the, the whole G.C. Holly campus and lack of academic facilities, we really need to, we, we're really going to have to move forward, and because these kids deserve somewhere to be able to practice and play. So, yeah.
Stan, should maintenance on these buildings be considered in which ones are we closing? Because I know some of them have a lot more maintenance problems than others.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so, I, I mean, I would, I would, that would be something I would be interested in, like, especially for the middle and maybe elementary's too. Because the idea of, of closing or moving Butler Stadium Middle and making it the elementary's, Butler Stadium Elementary, because I understand there's a lot of maintenance stuff that has to be done to that school. And, I mean, that would certainly be something that, you know, I could buy into, maybe, if, if, you know, we were going to not have to spend millions of dollars on a school, and we could close it and go move to one that need a couple of thousand, maybe, you know, that kind of thing.
Would it, would it be feasible to handle the high schools, middle schools this year, and then next year, look at the other? I don't know your timeline or how much work is involved in that and changes.
Timeline shouldn't be to do it all at one time.
It'd be nice.
Well, you know, if I may back up to Mr. Peace's comment first, yes, the deferred maintenance that's sitting out there, the future liability for this board is a huge factor in this. I mean, we can save $3 million every year for the next few years, just from our operating efficiency. But all three of our high schools, whichever one you decide to close, we need to use all three of them, because one of them will become a middle school. Because I think we all agree that, as you said, the current situation at G.C. Holly, we cannot continue. It's, it's been okay temporarily, but it is not a middle school. So whichever high school becomes a middle school, we're still going to be using all three of those campuses. The question then becomes, if you consolidate middle schools, you know, you mentioned Butler Middle, for example, it's a wonderful campus. It potentially could become a beautiful elementary school. And maybe we could avoid significant liabilities for an older school campus.
Well, just out of curiosity, because that, I was thinking that as you were saying it, it was awesome. What, aside from Butler Stadium Elementary School, what's, the two elementary schools are closest to the middle school's campus? I'm drawing on...
Mount Energy is the nearest one, so it's, it's a good haul, across 85 in the other direction. But the capacity of Butler Stadium Middle School is much larger. So it could be a very large elementary school in the future. Plus, the current Holly, where Holly is now, the old Creedmore Elementary School, that would become surplus property, and that maybe the board could realize some gains from that somehow, if someone were interested in it. One of the municipalities or the county or something, you could sell it, or rent it, or lease it, you know, and, and we could get more revenue. And then pay for renovations and repairs to the high schools. Just plow it back in, reinvest.
We can either make some decisions, or I can give this to new board.
Well, and to your question, Ms. Williams, about our preferred timeline from the staff's point of view, rip the Band-Aid off, please. You know, I think we've been down, we've been through this washing machine a lot of times, and we've suffered a lot with no big decisions being made. And so, you know, I would prefer not to postpone, certainly when it comes to the secondary schools, any, those decisions need to be made.
And may I, may I just say, actually, having been a board member walking into this monster of a decision and, and stuff, right out of the gate.
Oh, really? Was there another board member that, that closed a school the first month they were on the board?
Moving on. This is not something that I wish to hand off to new incoming board members in the future.
No, it's not.
It's just, it's such a burden, and that is going through all of the stuff with the community and the emails and everything, that is just not something that I wish to put on another board member coming into this.
And don't get me wrong, I don't want to do that either.
I know. I'm not saying you do, I'm just saying...
It means that we got to, we got, we got to do some stuff.
Right. And so that, my point to that is those, I am all in on just, let's get this done.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would not wish that on board.
Well, then, then we just, we need to decide.
I mean, I...
Which schools we are going to do, take the next step in to getting to where we need to be. And, Madam Chairperson, what the next step is to...
I mean, it's the studies, right?
It struck the administration on what studies you wish completed.
So we need to study closing the high school, Grand Central. I mean, y'all can throw something, another one in if you want to.
Yeah.
But we need to...
We need to throw in redistricting. Is that included?
We, we, we need to decide.
I think that would be part of the study.
Yeah, well, I mean, we need to decide on schools before we can, we need to know where they are before you do redistricting. So if you're going to study a middle school, closing, we're not, we're closing a middle school, or you would close, and you would move, well, you would close an elementary school, a middle school and a high school, basically. If you be talking about closing Butler Stadium Elementary and moving it to, Butler Stadium Middle and move them to Granville Central. and move them to Granville Central.
And I might note that when you do make a decision tonight, consider adding into the motion authorization to go, to the administration to go ahead and set, choose a date and time for the hearing, just given the timelines. It can be after the work session, but-
I mean-
The time, the timeline that they approved had October 21st as a, as public hearing date.
Great.
I mean, I'm happy to make the motion and move forward unless somebody wants to continue discussion. I mean, I move to instruct the staff, well, you know, the executive team to investigate the study and begin that of converting Central's campus to be a consolidated new middle school and to redistributing those students and faculty to JF Webb and South Granville and consolidating new temporary Holly and Buttonstem Middle into a prospective middle school at Granville Central's campus.
Dr. Frederick, if I may, could we split those apart into maybe two separate studies?
Sure. Totally, yeah. Totally. Yeah, yeah, just whatever is necessary for that.
I heard you. I'm good. So-
And, and whatever we want to call this, what you guys made, this report, which is not a study, I think it'd be personally interesting, and I don't know if everybody else feels the same, to have this level of a write-up done for repurposing Buttonstem Middle School's campus into some amalgamation of maybe two or three elementary schools that can capitalize on its campus and see if there's an opportunity for that to happen, which is dramatically less important than what's going on with this.
Say it again.
Just, just a continuation of, Mr. Peace, a continuation of your idea, just, you know, the opportunity to re-investigate Buttonstem Middle Schools as a potential house for maybe two elementary school campuses where we could consolidate maintenance budgets and all of that. I was just saying that that in a study, or not study, because I can't use that word, that report, that investigation should take backseat to the urgent ones that we're discussing primarily.
So you're basically saying start looking into that, but not part of this study?
Yeah, but the directive is, yeah, my motion is, the directive is what's going on with the middle school and the high school situations. But in the midst of all of that, if somehow all of those available data points are also nearby, that would be interesting as well.
Do you mind if I try to summarize?
Yeah.
So, study number one, as you proposed, would be to close Granville Central High School, distribute those students to South Granville and JF Webb, and move Holly to the Central Campus.
And Buttonstem Middle.
Then, well, how about this, number, study number two is to close Buttonstem Middle School, because the studies have to be about a closure, right?
Or a consolidation.
Okay. So number two would be close Buttonstem Middle School and redistribute those students to the new Holly and maybe some to Northern Granville as well, depending on the tenant zones?
Uh, I mean, my motion was-
Or just to, just to Holly.
Buttonstem Middle's students and new Holly go to Granville Central. Granville Central's everything as a high school merges into Webb and South.
Right.
However, however many studies it takes to accomplish that. That's what I would think, I would like to move forward from the, again, we'll call it the geography strategy. And if anybody's more creative than that, I'm cool with it.
There are a lot of kids fairly close to Oxford that go to Granville Central and go to that. So you've got to consider redistributing.
Yeah, and you saw some sample maps that Dr. Hamm messed around with and it, you know, it, geography has everything to do with it and where the households are, so.
Are we moving further on?
Well-
Wait. You said about the possible elementary school go to Button Middle, and then second part is stay?
It's like, or, okay.
Because, you know, this thing that Holly, so, and-
Can that be done later?
That can be done later.
Okay.
Yes, I see. I don't like to say the name.
Well, I'm, well-
No, what, no, no, we don't, I want you to understand what, what Ben said.
Well, I understand too, but I thought we also were discussing that possibly having Buttonstem way big elementary school.
Yes, Dr. Henry. I didn't say that, that was like-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I think I understood that too as well. That would be part three.
Three, okay.
And, and honestly, if we were to do study number one and study number two, that would be for next school year, correct?
Yeah.
And then maybe we could wait a year to then relocate the elementary school to the Buttoner Campus. Because we, it would take some time to renovate that school for younger children, yeah, the bodies and counters and stuff.
Yeah, I just, the only reason I brought it up in the motion was to echo everybody's sentiments about walking into a consolidation is kind of overwhelming until, for new board members to already have some of that evidence and, uh, but if it's, like I said, it is the third thing that should be investigated and if there's no time for that, that's fine. But it would just be to give new incoming board members a new data point rather than having to wait until next July or something. Because then we would also, if we have a little investigation now of tracking all of that stuff with the elementary schools and nine, 10 months goes by and next end of this school year, we start to talk about it again, we can see what that delta is, see how much that's changed, maybe the maintenance budget in one of the middle school, or elementary schools that's nearby has scaled disproportionately to other ones, you know? We could see what's deteriorating faster, where population's moving. So if we have a data point now, again, third priority, but if we have that now, 10 months from now, we could use that as a data point. Again, third priority.
Mr. Henley did bring up a valid point about the CTE facilities at Granville Central. Do you have any input about the future of, of those facilities or how it might be utilized in a resourceful way?
Well, yeah, I mean, those, those are beautiful, state-of-the-art facilities. I, you know, some of it, some of it could be used in a limited way with CTE middle school programs. Probably though, maybe something better to consider is Vance Granville and evening, weekend, summer courses they could offer. That, that wing could also be isolated and access could be, you know, regulated after hours, you know, so that they could have night welding classes there and other things. I mean, Vance Granville needs space, so I, I don't know, that's just something that occurred to me, but, uh, you know, we might, we're going to have to get creative about it. Or maybe, you know, um, one day the county could look at, if we need to add CTE programs, it could, we, our high school kids could travel there during the day. We could bus them there for specialized courses. I, I don't know.
I mean, would there, would we ever live in a world where we would be able to offer those types of classes to our middle schoolers?
Maybe, maybe.
I mean, once, I mean, isn't that kind of the whole point of this consolidation and closure conversation to free up those resources to be able to do these magnificent things in our school system?
I think you're right. I think, you know, when it comes to using some of that shop equipment, it, you're dealing with younger children, you got to be careful, but you know, you, I think you're right.
I mean, we do have agricultural electives at our middle school level and I know there's a, there's a good portion of that area is for agriculture, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And there are beautiful, just straight up classrooms in that wing too, just regular classrooms that could be used.
So where are we at with the motion?
It's waiting to be seconded.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
For, for the record, for my record, can you tell me what it is?
It's, it's, the process that accomplishes a geograph-
We talked about, wait a minute, we talked about A and B motion.
Yeah.
And both of them was, was what we voted on, right?
The high school and the middle school.
Yeah, it's just high school and middle school strategy.
Closing Holly and-
Right now.
Buttonstem and moving-
To Central.
And closing Central also.
Moving those, yep, yep. Going to two high school, two middle.
Ms. Davidson, did you, did you fully flesh out the word, language or?
So my understanding is that the motion that passed was to authorize this, or request a study of, A, closing Granville Central and consolidating its students into the two other high schools, B, consolidating Buttonstem Middle and New Holly on the campus of former Granville Central.
And then a corollary that's not really the study would be to examine how to convert Buttonstem Middle to a elementary, Buttonstem Middle School to an elementary school in the future.
I know I'm just one voice here, but I think it doesn't need to be anything more than like, what are the outstanding maintenance budgets, what's the seating, like the buttons and seats require, like, you know, efficiency. It can really be one page that's less than this as like just the hot, what, what metrics might change in 10 months that you would want to reference again, you know? Like, I don't know, maintenance, population, that kind of stuff. You know, I would, I would care about those things, not, I mean, does it have an auditorium? Does it have, you know, that, you don't need the map, I mean, that kind of stuff. I mean, I guess you do for this, but I mean, some of these things would, would be superfluous from like a data tracking perspective.
So we're really not asking for a study, we just want some information, so we don't really need to do a motion for that.
Yeah. And I just framed it, whatever you're naming this as like a report or something, something that's less fleshed out than that.
And this, these, this is to have them for 25, 26 school year?
Yes.
And, uh, the other one that we talked about, can we do it to schedule for the next 26, 27 school year, the elementary part? Because, uh, Buttonstem Middle would be closed all of 25, 26 to prepare to move in the next school year. We might as well do all that now. I mean, what's the point in not doing it now?
And you mean by doing it, you mean making the decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, yeah, I mean, we're not talking about doing it for the 26, 27 school year.
Sure.
But if the decision is to do it, then all the administration have to do is work toward getting it done in the next, in the next school year, whenever they can, you know, fit that into their plate of work. So if that needs to be in another motion.
Well, that's, I said that initially in the motion and you said that, that might be a lot for just the timeline perspective and that's why I put it as like a third priority thing, like it's a wish list thing. If we, I mean, we have a work session in two weeks. I mean, if you guys accomplish all this quickly and it seems like more things are happening and you draw up the report and we chat, I mean, like there's opportunity for us before November still.
At this part, it was moved another year from place to another thing.
I'm just listening to what the superintendent thinks they have time for.
And the great thing about just moving a campus, right, is that we, just shifting a campus like that, right, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we do not have to hold a public hearing, right, because it's not an actual school closure, it's just a move.
So where you would be consolidating, if you're saying move one elementary school into Buttonstem, that's right, if you're consolidating two.
That's, that's all that I'm referring to, is that, just that one motion.
Location.
There's a relocation.
I generally look at it as, are you going to have fewer school numbers at the end, like DPI school, identified schools? And if you are, then you would do it, go through the process.
That would keep, that one thing by itself would keep the exact same number. It would just, correct, it would just-
If you moved an entire elementary school, right?
Okay.
Okay.
So to be clear, board members, and, and thank you for considering our, our perspective on this, but, um, I think what I was driving at is I didn't want us to try to take on an additional closure, like a third closure immediately. But if you would like to make a motion or if you feel it's needed for the movement of the elementary school in the 26, 27 year to the old Buttoner Middle School campus, that's, I mean, we can, we will pull, pull together what we can, accredited items that you kind of ticked through, we can bring you a, a report on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let me just ask a question, like you said, like we're talking about now, the move of an elementary school. You always want to go back and look at that, you know, just like you did when you did this now, you meant where you already counted school, that would be mine, if you're closing it. How about, do you know what?
Yes, ma'am. It would be Buttoner Elementary School, would, because they're, they're right beside each other.
Right beside, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so if Buttoner Middle School were, were empty because it was closed, then, then the possibility could be to move, very, an older, smaller campus of elementary into a larger newer facility.
Is that something that might require an architect or engineer?
Uh, maybe, I mean, it's really, probably just a limited degree, yes, I'm sure, more than we think. It's, it's essentially bathrooms redesigned, maybe some of the, if we were going to have any pre-K classrooms there.
That's another, uh- Who is figuring out where pre-K classrooms can go?
Well, you'd have to basically do what you did at Holly. It was a middle school that became, well, elementary became a middle, so you're just reversing that trend, I guess. So we moved stuff.
So I think-
Which is why we, even, we would shoot for 26, 27.
Right. I think the, the question on the table is, the, the request from Dr. Frederick was to look into that and bring back some information as opposed to like authorizing a third study.
Yeah, because I don't, I'm, I can only imagine how much work goes into making these kinds of things, but we have one, we have one, two, three, four meetings until we need to make a final decision. And I feel like if there's opportunity for a little bit of that information to be drummed up, we could at least make a decision and see if we have the gas to even have a longer conversation about it at the next work, work meeting or something, right? And just as like a quick Google, Buttonstem Elementary's building is like 20 years older than the middle school building. So it's just taking advantage of newer campuses.
So we'd be, so just to ask for information and not have to do a motion for that, we're just asking for information.
I think that's where you stand right now.
Right, okay.
Ten minute break.
It's a pleasure of the board. We'll just have a consensus on that?
Yeah.
And our work, our work session will start at four that day, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What day is that?
It's the Monday, 23rd.
On the table.
Yeah, is that Monday? Motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll take a short break, maybe 10 minutes. We have to give me something. Are we ready yet? Okay, we're now back in open session. Um, do we have a motion to approve the personnel exhibits as presented?
Some of-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is dates to remember. Uh, September 18th, H R Innovation Committee meeting, 23rd of this month is our Board of Education work session. I hope everybody will be able to be here. And we have a poli, a Policy Committee meeting this, mm, 11 o'clock a.m. on the 24th. And on the 7th of October, we're back at our Board of Education regular meeting. Anything else anybody want, and it's, I think Ms. Hayes mentioned it earlier, there are a lot of, I think Austin sent it out, some, uh, Mer, Merit Society, Honor Society and that type of thing, so just check your calendar, maybe, hopefully we, I'll make some, one or two of them at least. It's nothing else.
Mr. Frederick, you've extended invitation for learning walks for the-
Yes, so as I was mentioning just a few minutes ago, there's a, uh, schedule coming out in the morning, it's scheduled for eight o'clock, so you can select the dates and times-
Oh, great.
Um, that you would like to participate and we'll, and I'll send you an individual email about the, with all the details.
Thank you.
Coming out at eight.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Motion passes. Everybody be careful going home.